Okay. At this time, I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, September 17th, 2019, meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners. At this time, if you'll please bow our heads in silent prayer for and ask the Almighty for continued blessings on this county and care for our people.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the faithful, in active states of America, and to the Republic of rich and sound, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would ask our county manager, Beth Jones, to please summarize any adjustments to the agenda.
Thank you, Chairman Mallory. We do have a few adjustments. The first is just a point of reference. You have an amended agenda memo which goes under the boards, appointment to boards and commissions on the bench before you, which replaces the one that's in your notebook. The second item is to add an item under appointment before the board, which is a presentation from Iredell State's full schools. The next item is to add under unfinished business, school debt reserve distribution discussions, as well as discussions regarding a call for a public hearing regarding a bond for next year. And then the fourth item is addition under new business, a report regarding transportation project status.
Are there any additional adjustments to the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda as adjusted?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
A motion by Commissioner Norman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
A post light sign. Motion carries unanimously. There are no specific presentations of any recognitions or awards by the commission this evening. We do have two appointments. The first, under item 6.1, is a presentation by Iredell County Environmental Health Director Brady Freeman on the updated onsite water protection operation and maintenance policy in accordance with North Carolina Rule 15A NCAC 18A dot 1961. Brady?
Good evening. Thanks for letting me come up. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the board. I've been deemed the task to talk about a really exciting topic, which is septic systems tonight.
I've been waiting all week for this.
I bet so. We've got it recorded. We can watch it again later.
It is a very important topic.
So, I gave a similar presentation to the Board of Health, the last Board of Health meeting, and Jane, our health director, Jane Henson, had asked if she thought that we needed to talk to the Board of Commissioners about the same topic. Commissioner Bowles and Susan Robertson, she said that, yeah, we probably need to talk to you guys about this as well. And I'll get to that a little bit later on why. But talk a little bit about maintenance of septic systems. North Carolina, in the classification of septic systems, they classify septic systems with Roman numerals one through six, one being a pit previa or an outhouse. Yeah, we still can permit those things without running water. And six being probably the most complicated septic system that there is with bells and whistles and pretreatment systems and whatnot, being such as things like schools with really high volume of water. Some of our STEP systems, STEP meaning septic tank affluent and pump systems, that may accommodate large subdivisions and whatnot, going to a common area for disposal. And so, in 1992, when there was an amendment to the septic rules that required maintenance, maintenance on certain types of septic systems for homeowner's responsibility and also the health department's responsibility or environmental health responsibility. And those systems were three Bs and the fours through sixes. We don't have any sixes in Iredell County, but we do have some fives. So, the public, as far as what our requirements for in environmental health, the type four systems or the five, the three B systems, excuse me, they require us to visit those sites every five years. The four systems is every three years, and the fives and sixes is once per year. So, that's our requirement. So, the homeowners or owners of these septic systems also have a similar requirement. They have to have a private certified operator that passes, passed the test, goes through some training, and they have to, and they have to also visit these sites. And then the type fours are twice per year. The fives and sixes can go anywhere from once, twice per year, all the way up to once per week, depending on how complicated they are. And then they have to report those on a certain frequency, which is in the packet of information that Amy provided you guys up front. So, what is maintenance? Maintenance is kind of like doing an oil change on your, on your car. Obviously, it's not based on the mileage, but it's based upon the frequency that we talked about. So, it's because it helps the longevity. If you have a pump system, it has working parts. Gravity systems, hopefully always gravity will be there, but pump systems are mechanical and we have to check those things, and the maintenance operators do too, to make sure the functionality of those things working properly. So, the accreditation process, which is required for us through the state, they're putting a lot of pressure on, on the counties to make sure that they're coming into compliance, to make sure that the health departments, environmental health departments are going out and checking these systems on a regular basis. So, there's only a handful of counties in the, in the state that are actually have full, full-blown maintenance programs. There's some that have renditions. They may do this piece, they may not do that piece, but there's only just a few in the, in the state. And there's about six to eight, from what I understand, that has full-blown maintenance programs in the state. So, fortunately, there's a rule change that's coming into effect. They've been talking about it for a year or so now. When this rule comes into effect, our responsibilities for the three B systems that I talked about earlier will go away. So, what we've decided to do is start focusing on the fours, fives, and six-type septic systems. So, with this, and so, first, the first thing we did, the thing that Amy provided you in your packet, was our maintenance policy. Wrote a maintenance policy to give the staff some guidance and some tools when they go out to the site, what should you be checking, how should be, how you should be checking those things as well. So, we were finally able to focus on these type of things because, as you know, the backlog went away, at least for about two, two years and some change, I think. So, we're able to focus on those things now that it's a requirement by law. So, the first step, we had to take inventory. How many of these things do we have? So, we look back, and as of January of 2019, I don't have an update since January, but we had 2,209 of these septic systems that are required by environmental health to go take a look at in some form or fashion. So, we first, we first focused on the private certified operators that the homeowners are required to have an active maintenance contract with. So, we looked and we found that 1,185 of these septic systems, out of the 2,000 and some change, were non-compliant. They do not have certified operators. So, that's the first compliance thing that we need to, we need to be looking at. So, in other words, 53% of the ones are not in compliance. So, why did they get out of compliance? Well, as far as when we do a final inspection, when a septic system is out there, right before it's covered up, we go take a look at it, make sure everything's working properly, go ahead and cover it up. But the final step is to make sure that there's a maintenance operator contract in place between the homeowner and the maintenance operator to continue, continue that process. Most of the time, these contracts are only for one year. Well, the second, the third, the fourth homeowner down the road, after these houses have been sold, probably have no idea that maintenance operation is even, even a thing. So, we wanted to alert the board to make sure that you guys understand, you know, what's possibly coming, coming down the road. So, we're looking at, how do we notify the homeowners first? We looked at different, different ways. We had a letter, that we were going to put in an envelope, sit out, put a stamp on it. We were looking at 1,185 of them. Well, we first, after doing that, the $651 and some change just for the stamps, and then not including the letter, not including the envelope costs and whatnot. So, we also looked at the next step, postcards. Postcards, 35 cents. So, okay, now we're, we're down to about $415 plus the cost of the cards. So, then we looked at a local printing company. And so, with that printing company, they were able to do a bulk mail. They're going to put the address on it for us, and it's going to cost us 29 cents. So, we've almost cut that cost in half just sending these 1,100 and some, some flyers out, out to the public. So, the concern, as I alluded to earlier, is when we send these notifications, I'm sure that probably our, our phones will be ringing, the health director's phones will be ringing, county manager's office, and possibly you guys as well. So, we wanted to educate you and let you understand, why are you getting these phone calls? Feel free to divert them back to my office, and we'll, we will take care of that. So, we wanted to let you guys know upfront, just to make sure that you're, you're aware.
Are you going to put your number up on the screen?
Got disconnected right before the meeting. But I can. I can put our main number for sure. But with the flyers, when we send these mailers out, we're going to have an email address and who to contact, you know, if there are any questions or concerns. So, they'll, they'll get all the information they need to be able to, to respond back to us or if they have a concern about it. So, our second step in the process, first step, is to bring these up to compliance. The second step is to make sure that we're going to actually have to go out to these sites and start looking to see if we have sewage on the ground, making sure the bells and whistles are working the way they're supposed to. So, we may be ended up sending notices of violations to some of these if they're not in compliance. So, that's, that's just the next step, but we will be educating the homeowners and whatnot throughout this whole process. So, that's pretty much all I've got. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Freeman, would you share with the rest of the board about how the permitting cost works and the reinspection, so, so that a homeowner would know what costs they're looking at?
The cost for, for us to come out and take a look at it is, is none to the homeowner. And the reason being is we have adjusted our fees over time to include that we knew at some point in time, when we didn't have a backlog, we're going to be able to address these things. So, the fees are, that, that they're paying upfront are covering some of the costs that we're having to incur to do these septic maintenance reports.
And that's indefinitely.
That's indefinitely.
Iredell County is not going to charge anybody anything else for inspecting their septic tank.
At this time, no, we're not.
Now, a maintenance contractor, obviously, that's going to be between the maintenance contractor and the homeowner, and they could expect that as an annual fee, correct?
That is correct. That's a, that's a different, different fee. That's between the owner and the, and the maintenance operator.
And most likely, the reason people haven't had problems is because these systems were brand-new when they bought the home.
Correct.
And it just hasn't given any trouble yet.
That's correct. And most, most of the septic systems that we see that give problems are systems like this, that they have failed to maintain that maintenance operator over time.
You're talking about notice to new homeowners. Is there an inspection requirement for the purchase of a new home with a septic system?
I'm not really familiar with real estate laws, but word on the street is that if you, if, if someone sells a home, that there's a septic inspection, kind of like a home inspection that would also be part of the selling process.
Well, it seems that would be the appropriate place to, here, here's your septic inspection. Oh, by the way, here's the requirement for a contract of maintenance that needs to be maintained.
And that's, that's very true, because most of the people that are doing these inspections are also operators too. So, they'll, just let them know, I'm an operator, I can, I can perform this service as well.
This is just for the pump systems. This isn't for the gravity feds, right?
That is correct, for pump systems. And it's not all pump systems, it's just certain pump systems. The three Bs are pump systems, but they're very simple. They pump up to a box and then they gravity feet out, sorry. And then some...
And you see a lot of those on the lake.
We see a lot of those on the lake, yes.
It's the more complex systems that, that require that.
Complex systems, you know, and we see a lot of the, the maintenance operation requirements are on the lake too. And, you know, usually, the smaller the system, the more complicated it is with all the bells and whistles. And they're pumping here and doing this, and they have different grab, different heads and whatnot, and they have to be adjusted to work properly.
Any additional questions or comments? Brady, thank you for the education.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
I was just going to add that, Mr. Freeman, I've heard a lot of special appointments before the board, but if that presentation wasn't number one, it was certainly number two.
I'll write that one down.
Thank you.
What is that? All right. Moving on to a special appointment before the board. Chairman Martin Page from the Iredell State's full school board is here, together with Board Member Chuck Galian and Superintendent Brady Johnson. So, they have a presentation they'd like to make, I believe, to us. So, y'all come on up and...
Good afternoon, Chairman Mallory, Commissioners, Ms. Jones. We're pleased to be here tonight. At our last board meeting, we were honored to host all the SROs in Iredell County. Our sheriff and our two chiefs from Troutman and Statesville, they had a delicious meal provided by our students, our culinary students fed them. And it was just great to see that many law enforcement officers involved with our children, not only providing safety, but just being there and providing an adult and an officer that becomes their friend. And, and that means so much. It means so much in the long run, especially now in our elementary schools, that these kids are going to grow up and they're going to know a police officer, a sheriff, deputy. They're going to be buddies with them. I went to Cottle Creek and we almost had trouble because all of the kids were fighting to see who could carry his tray at lunch. So, you know, it, it's thrilling to see that. So, we, we're here tonight to thank you. You made a special safety, security and safety budget line item for us. You let us move some of our capital money over. You guys put some money in it. Then you furnished some more money for the sheriff's department. So, now we have SROs in all our high schools. We have two in our two largest schools. We have an SRO in all our middle schools. And now we have an SRO available. Each SRO covers two elementary schools, so they're at each one halftime and available very quickly. They're done geographically, so they're close to each other. And we really appreciate what you did. So, tonight, we certainly aren't as exciting as a previous presenter, but we're going to give you some paper. All right. No, no, yeah, no jobs done till the paperwork's done. So, anyway, Mr. Galian and Brady, I'm going to let y'all go up here and present these certificates to each one of our members that will come down. I will. I was trying to, hoping we had a picture taker here.
Come around here. Yeah, why don't we all move around right behind you?
Oh, I don't do pictures. Oh, I don't do pictures. I'll help take pictures. Can we take one of yours?
No. We need to run it. We're on the floor. I'm not sure. Thank you. Appreciate the hour. We want to thank the board of commissioners. 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 We want to thank the board of commissioners.
Well, I'll just say that on behalf of the board, thank you for the, the recognition that we're all on the same team to provide not only the best, best world-class education for our students, but the, the safety and security and well-being that they deserve and need. And in this, in our society today, you know, our teachers and administrators deal with situations that most of us, growing up, never had to deal with. And, you know, when you think about SROs and, and the other security requirements, door locks, fencing, the ability to, you know, have limited ingress and egress and, and drills for active shooters, all of those things, together with our resource officers, are pieces of the puzzle that go in to provide a multifaceted, secure system. And of course, you can't be secure against everything, but you can be as prepared as you can within the limitations of the resources available. And so, we appreciate working with the schools and our law enforcement community in terms of finding the best ways to be able to achieve the goal with the limited resources available. And as most of you are aware, we had a quarter cent sales tax referendum that was designed to be primarily focused, three quarters of it, towards safety, security, and well-being issues. Since that didn't pass, we had to come up with some, a, a smaller pot of money to achieve the same desired effect. And does it do everything that we would like to? No, it doesn't. But it does enough to be able to check most of the boxes. And so, we appreciate the work that you guys do every day, and we are, we're pleasantly surprised to get this shout-out, because as you know, you don't often get recognition for, you know, sort of doing your job. But it's been a pleasure to work together, side by side, with the Iredell State's full Board of Education, as we work to deliver the, the world-class education that our students and our county deserves. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we will move forward on three public hearings. The first public hearing is a consideration of an economic development incentive for Pactive LLC, otherwise known previously as Project Blueberry. And we have Chris Younger and Jen Bosser here to tee that up for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We would like to formally introduce our new president and CEO, Jim Bozer, to Iredell County and the Iredell County Economic Development. This will be her first appearance for public hearing for Iredell County. She's made appearances at our public hearings for Town of Mooresville and City of Statesville so far. So, getting to make the rounds and introducing, introducing her to all of you, which you've met her already, but like to publicly and formally introduce her now and let her say maybe a few words to you, if that's okay.
Please do.
Okay.
Welcome, Jen.
Thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be here. I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to represent the county and the municipalities in Iredell, and I'm very excited to join you, and I think we have some great opportunities ahead. So, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here tonight, too.
We're excited that you're on board. Jen comes from the Raleigh-Durham Chapel Hill Triangle area, has extensive experience in economic development organizations at the city level, at the county level, and special effort there at RTI, getting together work clusters for industry in the information age. And so, she brings with a lot in her kit bag as far as the ability to help us understand the attributes that we need to be competitive in a 21st century economy, and more particularly as part of the greater Charlotte region, as we continue to, to grow the very best job opportunities for our citizens, and at the same time, grow our tax base so that we can take, keep our tax rate low. So, we want to thank you for your willingness to transplant from the Triangle to Iredell County. We're excited that you and your family are part of our community and look forward to many years of success in the future.
Very much.
All right. Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you to Iredell County, our Chairman Mallory, and this Iredell County Commissioners, Board of Commissioners, for your consideration, this economic development incentive request that we have before you tonight for one of our existing industries in the Town of Mooresville, Iredell County. Iredell County Economic Development is proud to present a local company, Pactive, also known as, previously known as Project Blueberry. They are headquartered in the Lake Forest, Illinois, and they are an industry leader in paper and plastics packaging. The company currently employs about 12,000 people globally, plans to expand, they plan to expand and invest in their facility in the Town of Mooresville in Iredell County. The company has over 40 manufacturing plants and consider multiple locations for this expansion. The expansion here in Iredell would be for their manufacturing operations in the Town of Mooresville. The company currently has 316 existing employees and plans to create 60 new full-time positions and generate 28 million in capital investment by December of 2020. And according to the Iredell County Economic Development Incentive Program, we are requesting an incentive be, an incentive be granted to Project Blueberry, also known as Pactive LLC, for five consecutive years totaling up to $465,000. The Town of Mooresville voted in public hearing last evening to award the company incentive to the company, incentive to the company, and that included a resolution needed by the company to qualify for a building reuse grant from the state of North Carolina. The award of the building reuse grant is not a requirement for the town or county to award an investment grant in this particular case. On behalf of Iredell County Economic Development, we'd like to thank you and answer any questions you may have about this incentive request.
Thank you, Chris. Are there any questions or comments from Commissioners? Hearing none, I will open the public hearing. And I understand that no one has actually signed up to be heard. I would inquire of anyone in the audience that would like to be heard to so note. And seeing or hearing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion. Well, we want to thank, uh, more education. Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, we want to thank, uh, more education. Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, we want to thank, uh, more education. Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, we want to thank, uh, more education. Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, we want to thank, uh, more education. Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, we want to thank, uh, more education. Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, we want to thank, uh, more education. Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, we want to thank, uh, more education. Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, we want to thank, uh, more education. Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, we want to thank, uh, more education. Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, we want to thank, uh, more education. Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, we want to thank, uh, more education. Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, we want to thank, uh, more education. Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, we want to thank, uh, more education. Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, we want to thank, uh, more education. Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, we want to thank, uh, more education. Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, we want to thank, uh, more education. Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, we want to thank, uh, more education. Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, we want to thank, uh, more education. Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, we want to thank, uh, more education. Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, we want to thank, uh, more education. Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, we want to thank, uh, more education. Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, we want to thank, uh, more education. Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, we want to thank, uh, more education. Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, we want to thank, uh, more education. Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, we want to thank, uh, more education. Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, we want to thank, uh, more education. Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, we want to thank, uh, more education. Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, we want to thank, uh, more education. Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, we want to thank, uh, more education. Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, we want to thank, uh, more education. Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, we want to thank, uh, more education. Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, we want to thank, uh, more education. Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, we want to thank, uh, more education. Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, we want to thank, uh, more education. Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, we want to thank, uh, more education. Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, we want to thank, uh, more education. Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, we want to thank, uh, more education. Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, we want to thank, uh, more education. Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, we want to thank, uh, more education. Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, we want to thank, uh, more education. Appreciate it. Yeah.
They will be paying above the average county wage, and the company will also make a $2.635 million in capital investment by December of 2023. In accordance to the Iredell County Economic Development Grant Program, we are requesting an incentive be granted to Project R, also now known as Plazgad USA, for three consecutive years totaling up to $31,500. The City of Statesville has also approved the company an investment grant. This occurred last night. In accordance to, I'm sorry, on behalf of the Iredell County Economic Development, we'd like to thank you for your consideration and answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Younger? Hearing none, I will open the public hearing. No one has signed up to be heard. I would inquire of anyone in the audience that would like to be heard. Hearing and seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask if there's a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve an economic incentive of up to $31,500 over a three-year period based on the company's investment of $2,635,000 and contingent upon a contract being executed within 180 days.
Motion by Commissioner Robertson. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
A opposed like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. Thank you to this board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
The companies appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Younger. Thank you, Ms. Bozer.
Real quick, when Jen addressed us in Troutman at our joint meeting, there was something that I think is worth noting. You know, she comes from outside, and some people may say, "Well, gee whiz, does somebody from outside really understand the county?" Actually, what she brought was a really unbiased set of eyes to take a look at what are the strengths, what are the weaknesses, what are the things that were doing well, and what are the things that we need to improve on. And even though she didn't make a formal, long assessment, she shared a few observations about what we had that she thought was good, touched briefly about some of the things she thought we might need to be doing in the future. And it was clear that she had a keen eye on how to market our county, not just this year, but really moving forward for the next decade. So, I'm real impressed. I'm really excited to hear what you come up with. Hope you're really nice to the Commissioner. But I think that's, you know, if we're going to be competitive, not for the next 10 months, but for the next 10 years, we probably, there's probably some things we're going to have to do a little bit different. And I appreciate that fresh approach that you brought to it, and I think we're a whole lot better off. I'm excited about what's going to happen as you get your feet on the ground and start to make some recommendations to us. So, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. We now move on to a public hearing to consider a request from Blue Jay Investments LLC to release the zoning and subdivision jurisdiction of 8.75 acres to the Town of Mooresville. Mr. Matthew Todd will elucidate their request.
Good evening to the board. The request we have before tonight is for a release of subdivision and zoning jurisdiction to the Town of Mooresville. Does touch the lake, you can see outlined in blue on Urban Road. Just to put it in perspective, this is Sam's Club down here on 150. The property had been subdivided previously into lots under the county's jurisdiction, but at this point, they're combining those to 8.75 acres and requesting release. The Town of Mooresville has already voted for annexation of this property in December of this year. Again, currently zoned RA. And the county's land use plan is low-density residential. It is slated in the Mooresville's new plan that's going to be adopted here in the next month or so to be a little higher density, I think, three to six lots, or three to six units per acre is what they're looking for, for this area under their plan right now. And I'd be happy to answer any additional questions on this.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Todd? Any comments? Then I will open the public hearing, and I don't believe anyone has signed up to be heard on this matter either, but I would inquire of the audience if anyone would like to be. Seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask if there's a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion that we would approve the request to release the zoning and subdivision jurisdiction to the Town of Mooresville by Blue Jay Investments LLC.
Motion by Vice Chairman Bowles. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
A opposed like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Todd.
Thank you.
And we now move on to administrative matters that are appropriate for our consent agenda for the benefit of everyone. These are matters that are usually technical in nature, involving staff requests and administrative requirements. We hear those at our 5 o'clock pre-agenda hour, which is held at this same location. It's open to the public, and we encourage anyone to be here for that, to hear about these issues in a little more detail. So, right now, if, Ms. Jones, if you would go ahead and summarize those.
Thank you, Chairman Mallory. The first item was a request from the Iredell County Economic Development Corporation to grant a 150-day extension in order to fully execute the economic development incentive agreement for Project Victory, known as MAC Molding. There's a request from ICATS to call for a public hearing on October 1, 2019, for ICATS transportation grants. A request from Tax Administration for approval of the August refunds and releases. And finally, a request from the Clerk to the Board for approval of the minutes from the meeting on September 3, 2019.
Okay. Are there any comments? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I may get motion to approve a pre-agenda.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Norman. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
A opposed like sign. Motion carries unanimously. There are no announcements of any vacancies occurring on any boards or commissions this evening. We do have some appointments to boards and commissions. First off, we have some appointments to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council and the Mooresville Planning Board, and Ms. Jones, would you go ahead and summarize those?
Yes, sir. The first regarding the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, we have two appointments and one appointment modification. The new appointments would be Statesville Police Chief David Addison, that will be serving as the Statesville Police Department appointment, and the other individual is Robert Lee IV, that will be serving as the member of the faith community. Pam Navy was serving as the police department appointment, and she will now be serving as the member of the business community. So, she is already serving. We're changing her appointment from police department to the business community. The next item with Mooresville Planning Board, we have one appointment, and the Mooresville Town Board has recommended Allen Select to serve in that capacity.
And that's for the ETJ?
That's for the ETJ, yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Is there a motion regarding those appointments? Motion to approve? Motion approved by Commissioner Hough. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
A opposed like sign. Motion carries unanimously. We have one final appointment to the Lake Norman Marine Commission. We had the two applicants for the one appointment. This is for a five-year term. Mr. Rick Howard and Becky Fox both volunteered to serve. We can tell you that their resumes, both are very impressive, and both would be, equipped themselves very well in service in this area. But unfortunately, we can only choose one, and we hope that they will both continue to avail themselves of opportunities to serve the county, because we need this caliber of these kind of individuals. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll nominate Rick Howard.
Okay. Mr. Rick Howard has been nominated by Commissioner Robertson. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
A opposed like sign. The motion carries unanimously. As I said, Rick is a longtime member of this community, well acquainted with the lake and its special character, and how much of an asset it is to this community, and indeed all the communities that surround it. And Ms. Becky Fox, just the same wonderful credentials, and a volunteer in many organizations, and has been active in many activities at the lake, and we just encourage her to look for additional opportunities in the future to serve. We'd love to be able to bring her on board. Moving on, this is, we have unfinished business under item 11. There are really two issues that are linked. The last meeting that the county commission had, we received a report from the Facilities Task Force that outlined their recommendations for the allocation of excess funds that were saved from the bond that was issued some four years ago. There were, there was a little over $21 million worth of funds that had not been spent, that were created by virtue of the fact that we were able to get lower than anticipated market rates on our bond issues, and that's in no small measure due to the fiscal responsibility that this board, for many years, has carried forward and obtained AAA ratings from at least one of the bond rating agencies, and the highest AA ratings from the others. So, it puts us in a good position to get very low interest rates. And we also, that bond was sequenced and phased in, so there was some, didn't have to spend any dollars until we actually had contracts to pay. So, that $21 million this board agreed to divide on a pro-rata basis, based on the percentage of the projects that the three systems, Mooresville Graded, Iredell Stateful Schools, and Mitchell College, had as part of that bond. So, in the process of discussing how to release that, and it became evident from the Task Force's presentation that the Phase 1 projects that had been identified for all three systems, they wanted to whittle away at those with these funds, which would essentially have left two major projects that couldn't be funded, the middle school for Mooresville Graded School District, and a new Southern End High School for Iredell Stateful Schools. Clearly, both of those would require a bond, and we segued from that discussion into a discussion on the bond and requirements that would be necessary. And as an outgrowth of that, we requested that the school systems, knowing that this is going to be a requirement, requested the school systems to provide us resolutions from their boards indicating that they would like us to proceed forward, to consider a bond and a referendum on that bond, to build those two schools, and to increase capacity in Iredell County, because we're anticipating doubling in size in the next 25 years, and we've got to have seats for our students. And that growth is primarily occurring south of Interstate 40, if you project it on out. So, as a result of their meetings, they've all three provided us resolutions. We also asked that they demonstrate a commitment to support educating the people of the county so that the people can make an informed decision in terms of their vote on any kind of bond that comes before them. So, they have done that, and so this evening, we are going to address the first issue of the funds that are being allocated from that $21 million. And then, secondly, when to start this process and to call for a public hearing so that we can educate folks on what the process is going forward, and then take it from there. So, any further comments this time?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say I have two motions. I'll do the first one, but before I do, in terms of a debt reserve motion, I'd like to also, in addition to the conservatism of our board, to thank our great finance experienced people and our administration from the past for investing these situations in interest-bearing and saving this money to, or we wouldn't be reimbursing it today. So, I want to say thank you to them. We have highly qualified and experienced people, so I think we should also thank them. And in saying that, I would like to make motion number one. This is in regards to our debt reserve motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve allocation of the debt reserve funds. These funds would be reimbursed on the approved and recommended projects as presented by the Schools Facility Task Force in Phase 1. This is in preparation for a potential bond being considered for March of 2020. These projects were also approved by each system's boards from Iredell Stateful Schools, Mooresville Graded, and Mitchell College Board of Trustees. The reimbursements would be reimbursed by invoice as the projects are completed. The allocation amounts potentials are, Iredell Stateful Schools, a maximum amount of $12,965,080. Mooresville Graded is $6,427,126. Mitchell Community College is $2,132. And I would also like, in this motion, to ask the Madam Clerk to please attach the projects list as they were presented and approved by the boards and presented by the Facilities Task Force at our last meeting to these minutes.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Hough. Any further discussion? Hearing none, is all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
A opposed like sign. Motion carries unanimously. The second order of business relates to a public hearing so that we can discuss the parameters of a bond and the way ahead in terms of the process.
Mr. Chairman, my motion would be to call for a public hearing on October 1, to consider calling for a capital bond referendum next March of 2020 for the requested projects identified by Iredell Stateful Schools, Mooresville Graded Board, and Mitchell Community College, as presented to us formerly by each of those boards for the identified projects, and their bond request total $125 million.
Motion by Commissioner Hough. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
A opposed like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Move on to the next item of business, which is the county manager's report.
Nothing to report.
Okay. Well, you just want to make this a record meeting. Okay. We did have a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.
Mr. Chairman, sorry to interrupt you, but we have to call for a public comment period tonight.
Oh.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
I apologize.
Well, that's not, I appreciate your holding me back. Okay, this is a public comment period, second meeting of the month. I guess I've been overwhelmed by the input from the crowd this, I'm blown by that one. Okay, anyway, no one has signed up for a public comment, so I would inquire of anyone that would like to be heard. Speak now or forever hold your peace. Hearing none, there's no reason to open the public hearing. Thank you, Commissioner Hough. And, all right, moving on then, past the county manager's pithy report, we did have a closed session to review attorney-client issues pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 Subsection A.3. There is nothing to report on those items. We also discussed a matter for economic development pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 Subsection A.4, and that is not ripe for any activity at this point. So, is there anything else to come before the board? There's none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Sub move.
Eh, with a second, I believe. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
A opposed like sign. Motion carries unanimously. We adjourn.
No.